We will come to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Abraham.
Present.
Mr. Gault.
Present.
Mr. Rhodes.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Present.
Mayor Kayler.
Present.
Tonight, we have Chris LaFever, and he's the Campus Pastor at The Crossing to do our invocation. Thank you. It's nice to meet you. I only spoke to you on the phone.
Yes, ma'am. Thanks for having me.
And then we'll have Palmer Stroop come up after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Is there any special request for prayer this evening?
Just good decision making.
Yeah, I would. My wife lost her mom this past Sunday, so if you all would remember our family in prayer, we would greatly appreciate it.
You bet. Would you all stand and bow your heads with me, please? Heavenly Father, thank you so much for today, just the opportunity that we have right now, Lord, especially for this City Council. I thank you that they're a group that seeks you first, that you're the head, and that they're willingly following that. Father, I pray for Mr. Abraham and his wife and their family as they're struggling through this loss. God, I pray that you just wrap your arms around them and give them just the love and the comfort of Jesus in this very difficult time. God, we love you, and I thank you so much for Jesus and His name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Manager, are there any additions or deletions?
There are none.
Okay, I have recognition tonight. If Mike and Debbie Stone will come forward, please. So, tonight, I would like to give you all a certificate of appreciation for Stone Lang Company and for your many years of service to the City of Paducah, providing friendly atmosphere and excellent service and products since 1876 on this ninth day of February. And I just want to say that I'm so thrilled that you all and your family has been a successful business in Paducah all of these years. It's a real accomplishment, and, you know, to see a family member take over from another family member and continue that business and that line. I'd also like to give each of you a Duchess and a Duke tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, "To all to whom these presents shall come greeting, know ye that Michael K. Stone is named a Duke of Paducah. To all to whom these presents shall come greetings, know thee that Debbie Shimwell Stone is a Duchess of Paducah. I hereby confer this honor with all the rights, privileges, and responsibilities therant to appertaining, and testimony where I have caused these letters to be made patent and the seal of the city to be here and to fix, done this ninth day of February, year of our Lord, 2016." So, appreciate your years of being a business here in Paducah.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And many other things that you do for Paducah as well.
Thank you.
May I say a word?
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, let me just thank Mayor Kayler and also the City Commission for this wonderful recognition. I appreciate it very much. Most of you may not know it, but our company was founded 140 years ago, originally by James Lang and his brother, Robert. Jim Lang was Mayor of Paducah and McCracken County Judge. And I'm fourth generation leadership, and I consider it a very humbling experience to serve as the temporary leader of our ship. Had some great, great people leading us, and any small business has to overcome a lot of obstacles. And the reason I think our company has survived is because we've had great people. I consider them family, not employees, but they're our family. We're the Stone Lang family. And I'd especially like to point out a couple of folks that are with us today. Elizabeth Vickery is our Hearing Rehabilitation Manager, and Laurie Izell is our Medical Products Manager, and they provide great leadership for our company, and I thank them very much for being here tonight. But again, on behalf of Stone Lang Company and our staff, I'd like to thank you very much for this honor.
And we have a presentation tonight, West Kentucky Community and Technical College, on the Community Scholarship Program. Welcome. Hello.
Thank you so much. It's not as if we don't see each other real often, but we're very happy to be here with you this afternoon or this evening. I want to take you to this brochure. You're there. But to give an update, my role tonight is to give an update on where we are with the Community Scholarship Program, talk about the 2014 first class that came after we registered students in the eighth grade. We started this six years ago. So, if I could take you to page five. This brochure basically tells the history of the program. You know the criteria. You know how it all started because you were one of those very first to leap forward and take a leap of faith and know that education and the route that we were proposing for tuition-free opportunities for the students in our region was really the way to make a difference in the workforce of tomorrow and in the lives of so many that could not go without this scholarship opportunity. So, to point to page five, that says that they signed up, they signed up in eighth grade, but we're really focusing on the ninth grade. And at that point in time, those students are worked with intensively by a college counselor, by the high school counselor, and you see in there that we're making approximately 15 individual appointments and times with those students. So, our job and the high school's job, when they made a commitment to this, is that if you, Commissioner Abraham, were falling short, you didn't have that 2.5, we're going to get in your face and say, what's wrong? What's happening? And we're going to try to work with you to provide whatever resource that we need to. And that's, again, in conjunction with the high school. They have introduction to college in the high school in their senior year. That talks about if you want to go to Murray State, we're going to help you fill out your FAS forms, we're going to help you fill out your application, because it's all about going to college. But then, when they come to the college campus, this lists the resources that they're going to have available to them. The college has made a commitment that when we started this program, we were going to put our college resources behind it. Every dollar that is given to the Community Scholarship Program goes directly to tuition. It's not used for any other purpose other than tuition. The cost is approximately $500,000 per year for this program. But they are going to have a college completion coach. Again, if you're not showing up for classes, someone is going to be walking over to the classroom, they're going to find you, and they're going to ask you what's happening. You're going to have mentoring. We have a mentor assigned to these students, and they're in an actual program. We have a summer bridge program. So, if you're not ready to take college-level courses before you come to the college that summer, you can take courses that are going to have you ready for English, have you ready for math, so that you're not spending time and our money that we've put forward as a community on developmental classes. So, we're going to move you through at a much higher pace. And then, you're going to take a college achievement academic success course that's going to help you with financial literacy and, again, help you choose that pathway so that when you come out of the college, you're going to either transfer for a baccalaureate degree or you're going to go into a job. That's what it's all about, is to prepare you and have you ready for the job. So, the college has made a huge commitment, but this community and you, as Mayor and City Commissioners, have made a huge commitment to this program. But we are at the point now where we can admit one more class. So, we're looking at giving you success rates on that first class that has come to us in 2014 and talk about where do we go from this point forward. So, if you would look on page seven, it talks about what happened with that first class that came in the fall of '14. We don't have results for '15. It would be too preliminary. But you can see from this that the retention from fall to fall as compared to those non-Community Scholarship Program students is 64.2 compared to 46.9. Now, when you look at those non-Community Scholarship, you might think that that's the other students that weren't qualified, and look at McCracken County only. It's for every first-time freshman that came to the college, and we have valedictorians from Gray's County, Marshall. That's all of the population that we serve coming to us for the first time, and this is Community Scholarship students in comparison. So, I think you can see that the number of credit hours that are taken is higher, and certainly look at that grade point average in comparison. So, this first class, the progress and the results look very good. So, I think you can be proud. I think we can, as a community, feel that we're on the right track. But I'm going to ask Ashley Wright if she would come forward and talk about the next steps.
Thank you. And I'm also going to ask Mr. Wheeler to come up here with me. Mr. Wheeler serves on our Community Scholarship Board as well as on the PJC Board at the college. But as Dr. Vezie mentioned, we made a conscious decision, the Community Scholarship Program Board made a conscious decision, that we would not enroll any students in this program in the eighth or ninth grade unless we had funding that was secured for when they graduated. We felt there was no reason to get their hopes up if we did not believe that we would have that scholarship money available when they graduated. And so, we are now out meeting with what we call our charter investors, and you'll see those listed on the back of this brochure. Those are investors that made a commitment to this program and to this community back in 2010. The City of Paducah is certainly one of those, and you committed and have continued to commit your resources to this program since that time. But today, we recognize that we can enroll one more year. So, in 2017, that will be the last year of students that we can enroll in this program and know for sure that we have funding available until they graduate. And that was by design. We wanted to make sure that we had some data to be able to show you as our initial investors that this program was working, and we wanted to make sure that we had that available before we went out to the larger community as well. And so, today, we are here because we believe that we do have that preliminary data that is showing that this program is working, and it's making a difference in this community. And we believe as we bring continual classes into this program that we will see even larger and more successful results. As Dr. Vezie mentioned, we need approximately $500,000 a year for two classes to be enrolled simultaneously at WKCTC. And so, we are going to begin to talk with our community about raising $5 million in order to have funding firmly established for the next 10 years. We don't know what funding, the future of funding for higher education will be. For sure, you look across the country, and there are a lot of different models that are evolving, and so we don't know what Kentucky will look like down the road. Currently, we know that the proposal is for budget cuts to higher education. And so, if we are going to continue to provide the kind of quality workforce that this community needs for the future, we are going to have to invest as a community in the education of our young people, and we believe this is one way that we can do that. And so, we would ask the City of Paducah to consider during your budget hearings over the next few weeks, including this, in your budget. And I'm going to turn it over to Kim. I know that he has worked so hard on this.
Well, thank you, Ashley, and you've done a great job, you and Dr. Vezie. And I just want to add a couple of personal comments. I've had the pleasure, the honor of working with this program ever since it started, long before we ever came to you the first time and asked for support. It took almost three years of planning, development, going to other places, and understanding how a community-funded scholarship program could work. Believe me, it's been a learning experience. We are a long way from having the level of confidence that we would like to have in this program today. What we are enthused about is the things that Ashley and Dr. Vezie have shown you already as great indicators. But I think, as we were talking before the meeting, what's really come home to me is the fact that what we are talking about regards a fundamental change in the thinking of the entire community. People need to start thinking about the fact that their kids can be going to college at an early, early age. I've had people with children as young as five and six years come to me and tell me that their older brothers and sisters had come home from school raving about the program and had communicated that to the younger kids, and the younger kids were already telling their parents, I'm going to college. And I think that's the real fundamental change that we're beginning to see in this whole community, is an attitude of being able to go to college and wanting to go to college rather than the attitude that perhaps prevailed in many cases of saying, I cannot, simply, that's not out of my realm. So, I can tell you from personal experience that I've seen that many, many times already. I think the other point I'd like to reiterate is Ashley's emphasis on the fact that we do not commit this program unless we know that we have a full five years of funding in front of us. So, we're asking for, in essence, a little bit of a leap of faith. We can't show you today hard numbers on what the results of the first class that signed up for this program in the eighth grade five years ago are because they haven't finished yet. What we can show you are the types of improvements that have already become evident in terms of the performance of the individual students, the number of hours they're undertaking, their retention rate. Everything we see says the program, as it still, is a success. And I would like to mention just one other thing, too. We started this program nearly 10 years ago, and the intervening, and the model we used was a program that had been established in Kalamazoo, Michigan, a community not too much larger than ours, to do exactly the same thing, but with dramatically different funding resources. That program is now 10 years old, and that program has seen an improvement in the college-going rate of their local high school students that exceeds the goal that we set for ourselves when we first put this program together. So, there is evidence that says the programs work. The two programs are not identical, but they're very close to each other. I think that we have every reason to expect continued, it says. I know, Mayor, I believe you've been to a couple of the luncheon meetings that we've had with the students at Christmas time, just to see the enthusiasm and the excitement that they individually show and the appreciation that they show for being in that cohort that can, in fact, continue on with their education. So, is it a reach? Absolutely. Is it a reach for a community this size? Absolutely. I'm convinced that this program was one of the reasons that Dr. Vezie's entire college was recognized as one of the top three community colleges in the country again this year. Out of 1,200 odd colleges, we are in the top three in the entire country. This is just one piece of a wonderful program there, but it certainly is a significant one. So, I would like to say, not only would we ask that you support the program this coming year, but also think of a mechanism and help me understand the mechanism that Mr. Peterson might use to build this into the draft budget for future years, not necessarily signing on the dotted line, but at least indicating that the city has the continuing support of the program in mind from year to year. Thank you.
We certainly thank you for the opportunity to be with you and present to you this evening, and we're trying very hard in this community to commit and show a culture of education as a part of our community ongoing. So, that's what we want to convey to you tonight, and we appreciate you.
Thank you. Any comments?
A couple of comments. One, Booker T. Washington was convinced that education was the mechanism you could be used to level the playing field. And it's not enough to strive to be successful in the endeavor that was taken on by the city and the college, but measurable results. And it never ceases to amaze me when I go, when I travel throughout the state, and we talk about education being the one thing that would, can pull an individual out of their present situation. And everybody in the room always agrees with that, whether you, whatever side of the aisle you sit on, education is it. But when it comes to how do we get that done, I think we kind of blaze a trail with that in the relationships that we've had, that we formed here in the city. And so, this is why I love being in the position that I am when it comes to, we talk about opportunities and making the most of opportunities, creating an opportunity for an individual to make the choices to be successful. And so, when you have that mechanism in a community and you have the relationships with the city and the county and the college, and you guys are like, okay, it's not enough for us to just get you in the program, but we're going to make sure that you complete the program at a high level with the mentoring and just bugging the heck out of a kid, want to know what's going on. That means a lot. So, I can't wait for those other numbers to come in, that data, to show that this was a win-win, is a win-win. And supporting this type of program, I don't know what's going to happen on a national level or what's happening on the state level, but when you have people that's committed in a community like Paducah, we have to take care of ourselves as best we can, and not always depend on monies coming from other places. And I think that's what makes Paducah unique. I think that's what makes you all unique, being in those positions. So, I fully support it and will do everything I can to convince other folks to participate in this scholarship program. So, I thank you very much for what you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
On the money that's currently budgeted, does that go toward that $500,000 cost per year? Or, and I know there's a $5 million campaign for like an endowment, I guess, or not an endowment, but...
No. The endowment, and Ashley, I'll pull you over here with me, but the endowment, if we endowed this, we're probably looking at a $20 million endowment. We know that's not possible, but we do think that we need to establish a long term. Like I said, you know, you don't want to, young people coming up are already looking at this and thinking, this is, I can go to college. And you want to keep that going, but things may change. You know, the Tennessee Promise, where they have tuition in Tennessee, that is just now moving forward in Oregon. I don't see that in our short-term future at all, but things may happen. So, we want to build that, be always conscious of that. But we're looking at $5 million that would last us, and you can't keep, 10 years doesn't mean you can register students for 10 years, but 10 years in the future, we're going to have this program, is what we're looking at.
$5 million for the next...
And the $500,000, that's what it takes each year for your freshman and your sophomore class to move forward. That's...
But that does not include any of the resources that the college puts...
Okay, that's what I, no. That's just tuition.
That is tuition only. So, I want to be very clear that any of the dollars that any of our charter investors or any investors moving forward commit to this program is for the scholarship. It is not for the money that we have chosen to invest as a college into the faculty and staff that support these students.
And we have full-time staff dedicated to only this program because, you know, we're looking at 500 students, close to it, by the time you look at your freshman sophomore class, you know, 400, 450 at least. So, you've got to have the resources if you're going to follow through like that. And Commissioner, you know, I can't miss an opportunity here to brag on the overall college. That Aspen Award, we were recognized for our commitment to equity and that our graduation rate of underrepresented students can mirror the other students. So, that, achieving the dream, one of 110 colleges in America, that's a part of that program, achieving the dream, that there would be equity for every student that walks in our doors. But that means you have to commit the resources. So, thank you.
Thank you.
If you have any other questions, my contact information is on the back of that brochure. I'll be happy to provide that for you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Abraham, you hear the minutes?
I do. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor... Well, I'm sorry. That's... All right, here we go. I move that the reading of the minutes for January 25, 2016, January 26, 2016, and February 2, 2016, City Commission Meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the City Clerk be approved as written.
Second.
Everybody's looked at the minutes?
Yes.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Under our resolution, I move that a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Supporting the Location, Premier Fire, Inc., by Rebating the 1% Payroll Tax on Certain KEDFA Program Eligible Positions Be Adopted." I will.
In 1974, Premier Fire was founded as West Kentucky Sprinkler. At that time, they were strictly a sprinkler service company. They're now on their second generation of ownership. They since changed their name to Premier Fire, and now are a full-service provider of fire suppression and a security company. They design, fabricate, install, service their products. They have physical locations in four different states, including Kentucky, Illinois, Missouri, and Oklahoma. They provide service in 10 states and three countries, including Japan, Turkey, and Qatar. Their Paducah location has become their corporate headquarters for these other locations. That's extremely important to us because they are now an exporter of services outside this community. So, they're responsible for bringing outside money in, which results in actual growth in our economy. These are the types of companies we like to see. Your corporate headquarters means a lot to a town like Paducah, and to be able to say that we have something like that here, especially when you look at the number of states they serve and the other countries they are actually exporting services to and bringing those outside dollars in. In 2014, they announced plans to expand their Paducah location and add 20 jobs. They converted shop space into design and office space to allow for more engineers and more designers to design their systems. So, they've since modified their location in Paducah and hired 20 jobs at an average of 19, 20 an hour. In June 2014, they received KEDFA Board approval for the state to contribute, to rebate the 3% payroll tax. What we are requesting is that Paducah participate in the KBI program and recognize the 1% payroll tax participation in that program.
Mayor, I'll second your motion.
Not to exceed five years.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Will, is the 1%, is this for the 20 new employees?
The new employees, yes, sir.
It's not for the 55 original?
Correct. This is only, the incentive is only for new employees created.
All right. Answer me this. Maybe I have to paint you a picture, but is it for an employee or is it for a position? And my example is, so let's say that, Will, all of a sudden magically you are one of these 20 employees that's been hired.
Sure.
And just to make it easy, at the end of the first year, you've done such a super job that you now become one of the managers, and let's say that your pay doubles. So, do we give the 1% tax on... So do we give the 1% tax on your new pay rate because you're the manager or is it the replacement for you that comes in to take your old job?
That's a good question. The way these programs are structured are performance-based, based on what you are approved for in the beginning. So say hypothetically speaking, a company applied for incentives and they said they were going to hire 10 employees at $10 an hour. Therefore, you get a maximum amount, so there's a, you approve them for, the city approves for 1% of that total payroll amount. So 1% of that would be, what, $100?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So for each of those five years, they are approved to receive a maximum of that $100 each year, regardless of the change in those positions, regardless of if someone in that position is, is promoted, as long as they maintain that 10-job threshold, they receive that $100 per year. So they can, their payroll can change up however far, but that does not mean the incentive grows. They, you approve them for a maximum amount.
We do, we know how much money we are investing.
Correct.
And so at the end of the year, we have some mechanism to make sure that, that before we dispense the money, they have got the employment...
Absolutely. There is, you, you keep up with the jobs they have, you keep up with their payroll to make sure that they are maintaining their job thresholds.
Okay. And I guess there's a clawback?
Correct. Well, there's no clawback because it's, it's strictly performance-based. You only receive the money for what you pay.
Okay, if you had one less employee, okay.
And that's, that's, on the other side of that, if there, if a company comes in and says, okay, I'm going, we're going to create X amount of jobs and the memorandum of understanding states that, and that doesn't happen, then there, there's, you know, that could be some...
Well, that, that's the beauty of this being a, a performance-based, it's actually only if the payroll tax materializes are we obligated to pay it.
Correct.
This is the cleanest way to do something. It's, it is absolutely performance-based, so that, that becomes the clawback because we simply don't provide the credits.
Correct.
Yeah, I like the performance-based type of situations.
Will, I asked Scott if the city policy with respect to requirements for accessing payroll tax credits have been or will be met by this company, and the answer was yes. That's your understanding as well.
Yes, of course.
Is there a slippery slope? We go, Premier, in fact, they are our, our security fire providers at, at our place. But is there, I don't know, I, I guess it never occurred to me in all the years I was in business that, oh, I could go get a tax break if I just hire some people. I always just assumed that you hired people because you had the business, you wanted to grow your business, you want to take care of your customers. How do you, in a philosophical, I'm not picking on Premier, but in a philosophical way, how is it that some get and some don't? Just as a philosophical...
They don't ask.
Yeah.
Some ask, some don't, I guess.
I guess that's a purpose, because I never ask. It never dawned on me that you wouldn't do that.
And there's certain guidelines, so if you didn't follow within, fall within those guidelines, you wouldn't get it anyway, but...
And I think importantly, the guideline here that was probably the most prominent in, in the new policy that you all approved about a year ago was a minimum wage rate rather than a amount of payroll, the thought being that we wanted to see the impact on the household level and on the standard of living at the household level. So perhaps the most important qualifier is that that minimum wage rate be met before the jobs would be eligible for payroll tax credits.
And that's something I think, could you, could you have used that, that incentive?
Could we have? I don't know.
I mean, you're going to, if you hire people and they meet the, the standard, performance-based, that's, that's very encouraging because you have that workplace performance. And if you get a tax break because of that, that's a win-win. I don't have a problem with that. I mean, that's, that's, that's the way it should be.
The way you look at the slippery slope is, you know, you set for, you do what the city's done already and set forth an incentive policy that states what your minimum standards are for companies, for the growth you'd like to see in your community. And then it's, it's, we're up to the company to operate within those, that policy within those thresholds. And then another barrier to that as well is this right here. You, you have a commission that comes together and votes on that. So there's, you know, kind of where you set forth your standards for, for the types of jobs you'd like to see in your community. You decide what kind of wages you want to see growth in and what wages you want the to, the city of the community to participate with that company and to encourage that type of growth. So I don't look at this as, or I don't think you want to look at it as, you know, a tax break that a company can apply for, but more of what it really is, an incentive for a company to pay a certain wage level. And because the city wants to see these wage levels grow in our community, we incent these companies to grow those types of jobs and pay that much more. So that's why we have incentive policies, why we have this meeting to approve that.
And with this company, we don't have anything else invested?
To my knowledge, no.
Yeah, so it's just giving up the payroll tax.
Correct.
For at least five years.
Just five years.
Just five.
Is it 1%?
Mm-hmm.
1% of the two.
And the state's giving them 3%.
3%, yes. That's the part of the Kentucky Business Investment Program.
It's wonderful to have those jobs here in Paducah at $19 an hour. City Clerk? Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Onto appointments. Thank you, Will. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Edward Healy as a member of the Electric Plant Board. This term will expire February 6, 2020.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in reappointing Edward Healy as a member of the Electric Plant Board.
Second.
City Clerk? Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Okay. I move that...
Did I do something wrong?
You read the next appointment.
Oh, I read it first. Thank you. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Kevin Shanks and Valerie Pollard as members of the Paducah-McCracken County Urban Renewal and Community Development Agencies. These terms will expire February 23, 2020.
It's confusing to me. I don't understand it either.
Commissioner.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in reappointing Kevin Shanks and Valerie Pollard as members of the Paducah-McCracken County Urban Renewal and Community Development Agency.
Second.
I guess, I mean...
City Clerk?
Practice.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Carol Young as a member of the Nuisance Code Enforcement Board. This term will expire February 26, 2019.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in reappointing Carol Young as member of the Nuisance Code Enforcement Board.
Second.
City Clerk? Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Jill Gottwire and, Wire and Mark Whitlow as members of the Board of Ethics. These terms will expire February 10, 2019, and February 10, 2018, respectively. And that's because Mark went in on a half-term. Correct? That the, the difference in the two, because I think Mark went in on a, like a half-term.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in reappointing Jill Gottwire and Mark Whitlow as members of the Paducah, of the Board of Ethics.
Second. City Clerk? Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners and jointly with the McCracken County Judge Executive, I hereby reappoint Beverly McKinley and appoint Vic Patel to the Paducah-McCracken County Convention and Visitors Bureau. These terms will expire December 31, 2018.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler jointly with the McCracken County Judge Executive in reappointing Beverly McKinley and appointing Vic Patel as members of the Paducah-McCracken County Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Second.
City Clerk? Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Jay Page to the Paducah-McCracken County Convention and Visitors Bureau. This term will expire December 31, 2018.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in reappointing Jay Page as a member of the Paducah-McCracken County Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Need a second?
Second.
City Clerk? Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
As always, I want to thank all of these people for serving on our boards in the City of Paducah. It's, they take their time and serve well. Onto motions. Commissioner Rhodes, you have that one?
I move that the following documents be received and filed. Documents: Certificate of Liability Insurance Buster Loveless Building, J-Ton Construction Company Incorporated, D&amp;D Construction of Paducah, Asphalt Paving Incorporated, Special Warranty Deed, Owners Policy and Settlement Statement with Paducah Louisville Railway Incorporated for 619 North Sixth, Ordinance 2015-10-8309. Contracts and Agreements: Concrete Rating Mix Contract for One-Year Renewal Agreement with Federal Materials Company for the Engineering Public Works Department, Ordinance 2014-2-8121. Change Order Number Five with Bluegrass Uniforms for Uniform Services for the Fire Department, Ordinance 2016-01-8347. Agreement with Jag Dohini Companies to Purchase One Sewer Pumper Truck for Engineering and Public Works Department, Ordinance 2015-07-8275. Financial Statements For Years Ended June 30, 2015, and 2014 Museum of American Quilters Society, Paducah Symphony Orchestra Incorporated, The Marketized Theater of Paducah, Kentucky Incorporated, and Paducah Water Works Financial Highlights for November and December 2015.
Second. City Clerk? Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Municipal Orders, Commissioner Wilson?
Upon the recommendation of the City Manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah order that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I believe you're all aware of this one. Regrettably, Ben Peterson is moving, not to a greener pasture, just a different pasture. And after 15 years of reliable service to, to this organization and the people of Paducah.
He's moving back home.
Moving back home, Ben. Ben came to us from Warren County. Ben is responsible for being here because of me. When I left the planning department, went to McCracken County, the position that was left open. That's when Tom Barnett moved up, they, they hired Ben, Ben Peterson. So I can time it to when, when I went originally to the courthouse. Ben also worked with Cheryl Chino at the Bluegrass Area Development District in Owensboro. That's where they, where they, they both came from, to us.
So just make you, just make sure you get us another Ben Peterson. That's all you got to do.
It's, it's hard to get every employee to be like Ben Peterson, but we'll do our best.
I'm sure you can pull out the rabbit out of the hat.
Please wish him well for us.
City Clerk? Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham, you have the next one? Under Municipal Orders.
I do. I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Authorizing the Application for a Matching Grant in the Amount of $15,000 Through the Kentucky Heritage Council State Historic Preservation Office and National Park Service for a Certified Local Government Program Grant for the Installation of Trail of Tears Interpretive Site Adilities Along the Front, I mean, Along the Paducah Riverfront Near the Kentucky Avenue Opening Be Adopted."
Second.
Cheryl? Hello, I have a brief presentation for you to give you a bit of background information on why we're requesting CLG funding. Many of you may or may not know that there is a water route to the Trail of Tears and Paducah has a designated site, a waterfront site. As you can see there in red, that is the water route for the Trail of Tears. Just to give you a little bit of history, between 1835 and 1839, there were eight contingents of Native Americans that passed through Paducah. Two were Creek and six were Cherokee. The first contingent of Creeks, a party of 511, spent the night on Owens Island in December 1835. And the first contingent of Cherokee's, a party of 466, anchored in the Ohio River in March, presumably of 1836 or 1837. A second contingent of Cherokee, a party of 250, also anchored in the Ohio River in April of 1838. A third contingent of Cherokee were left in Paducah in June of 1838 on the steamboat Smelter. And unfortunately, shortly thereafter, in July of 1838, a Native American child passed away on that steamboat. And the last detachment, the Drew Detachment, stopped in Paducah in January of 1839. Chief John Ross, leading the detachment, heard of several delays of the, the overland detachments through Nashville and Mississippi crossings in Illinois and Missouri. And so he docked the steamship Victoria in Paducah at the mouth of the Ohio River and took that detachment into Illinois. In July of 2014, Paducah entered into a certification agreement with the National Park Service identifying the waterfront site for Paducah. This certification allows technical assistance from the National Park Service in development of our site. It also, the National Park Service officially recognizes Paducah's waterfront as an important site on the Trail of Tears. And the certification for, for Paducah completed the water route through Kentucky for the Trail of Tears. And then the Paducah and the National Park Service both agree to strive to achieve the highest level of resource protection. This is, goes back to historic preservation that we strive to achieve in downtown Paducah. And it also allows for visitor appreciation of the site. The National Park Service will design and deliver two water route signs or panels for the city's installation. The cost of those panels is approximately $1,000 each. One of those panels describes the history of the water route, while the second is site-specific to Paducah. And the signs are approximately 24 by 36. And this is an example of what those panels will look like. This is at the Segoya Wildlife Refuge in Arkansas, and it's very similar to what ours will look like. The city is currently on the National Park Service's list for design of our signs. We had to tell them that we did want the signs and that we wanted to be on their list for manufacture of those signs. And the estimated completion date for those is January 2017. The Kentucky Chapter of the Trail of Tears Association will provide the National Park Service with the information for our signs, and then we will have an opportunity to review those and approve those signs before they are manufactured. And then we are responsible for their installation. This aerial photo shows you approximately the location of where that site will be at 200 South Water Street. And this, these are pictures of that location. It's a relatively flat and accessible location, and it also, it will allow it to face Owens Island. Again, additional pictures. The next step in the process is funding to create the site, to install the signs and to pay for those signs. And we are preparing a CLG application, which we're hoping you will approve tonight to offset the cost of installation of the signs, cost of the actual signs, landscaping, construction offset the cost of installation of the signs, cost of the actual signs, landscaping, construction of a viewing platform, and sidewalk. The cost is $25,000, estimated $25,000. The CLG grant, if awarded, will pay for 60%, $15,000 of the project with our obligation at $10,000, which we are proposing to come from the planning department's FY 2015 budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I know that this is something that has been in the works for a while, Cheryl.
That's right.
Few years. And I know CBB has been involved a little bit in it.
I don't know.
With talking with, I think, just talking about...
Yeah, yeah. There's been a lot of...
Trail of Tears.
There's been a lot of community discussions, I think, through Josh Sommer in our department. And there's been some interest in making sure that this, this site is located in Paducah and that it is a, that is a nice site for folks to visit, more than just the panels, but also create the platform and the landscaping to make it a nice viewing platform.
Do you have a design for all that yet?
Working on it.
Oh, good.
We need money first.
You know, it would seem this is not one of America's better days with the ending removal. It would seem this is the least we could do and thank you.
I agree. Because this is kind of close to my heart because my husband's Native American, so are my children. So, yes, I feel like it's important, but that's a personal, personal view, so.
It's the least we could do. Thank you.
Of course, I was born in Livingston County, and there's quite a bit of the Trail of Tears there with Mantle Rock, a, a good portion of the trail, so.
The overland trail.
Right.
Right, right. And then, and that's what's not commonly known is that there was a water route to the Trail of Tears. Most of it, most folks know of the overland trails, but not necessarily the water routes.
So, did they leave here then and continue on the rivers?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
All the way through Arkansas.
Please.
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the planning department to apply for an online grant through the Firehouse Sub Public Safety Foundation Grant Portal to request $15,000 for the fire department's purchase equipment be adopted.
Second.
This is very basic. The Firehouse Sub Foundation was, the Firehouse Sub's restaurant chain was actually created by former police and fire personnel, and their sole mission of this foundation is to provide them with equipment and training needs for fire and police departments. And that is why the fire department is requesting assistance through this foundation to purchase some much-needed equipment, air tanks and things of that nature. And their request is $15,000, and there is not a match requirement for this grant.
That's even better news.
Even better, that's right.
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
We're on to our ordinance adoption. Commissioner Rhodes?
Okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the city to enter into an agreement, amendment to the lease with AT&amp;T for the benefit of the city. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The Board of Commissioners hereby authorizes and approves the city of Paducah to enter into the Fourth Amendment Tower Option and Lease Agreement with AT&amp;T to amend the previous lease with AT&amp;T, which will increase the monthly rental amount owed to the city of Paducah by $450, ready to act active to March 1, 2015. Further, the mayor is authorized to execute said fourth agreement tower operation lease in agreement.
Second. City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the First Amendment to the Agreement for Consulting and Management Services for Chronic Health Conditions for Full-Time City Employees, covered by the city's group health insurance plan with Edumetics LLC, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city of Paducah approves the First Amendment Agreement for Services with Edumetics LLC for Consulting and Management Services for Chronic Health Conditions for Full-Time City Employees, covered by the city's group health insurance plan with Edumetics LLC. This amendment modifies Section 2.1, Term 3.1, payment for services and include the Paducah-McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency of the original contract agreement. Further, the city authorizes the mayor to execute the First Amendment to the agreement.
Second.
City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
City Managers Report.
Thank you. Just a little follow-up on last week's workshop. Mayor Kayler, myself and Rick Murphy did have a good meeting with Corps of Engineers